Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 11 meeting. It's nice to see we have members that are not on vacation and some that probably will never go on vacation. But welcome. Okay. The first order of condition is the approval of the minutes for the June 13, 2024 hearing. And on that meeting, it was John Mustriani, Mark Casaloya, Robert Casaloya, and David Claro. I need a motion from one of those members, please.
Motion.
Motion by David. Is there a second? Mark?
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor of the approval of the June 13 meetings? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yes?
Aye.
All those in favor, opposed? That's unanimous. We need a signature page. We have a signature page? We do. Okay. Let me pass this down to Melissa, please. Okay, we've got a couple of items under general business. This is a request for Fairfield Residential to release a bond in relation to the Stone Ridge One complex. I believe that we had released the $400,000 previously. We have our aspilts in hand, and it looks like they are ready to go. So with that, I would take a motion to release the balance of the bond, which I think is, what was it, $600,000 total originally?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the balance would be two. The release of the balance of the bond. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Daga.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed? That is unanimous. I will sign this as the plan. It's not the one, though. Okay. Next, we've got the request for Fairfield Residencies to discussion of the development of the 260 units at Stone Ridge Two. They're proposing some minor changes, which is seeking the finding that such changes are substantial with the meeting on the Chapter 760, CMR 56-04. With that, gentlemen, if you can, okay, you've got it up. Let me get the plans to board members.
I have additional copies, too.
We may need additional copies. I have three here. One, two, three, four, five, and I'll have one as well with this. Perfect. Okay. I'm sorry, your name, sir?
This is Will Park. He's with SMMA.
Okay, William Park. All right. Would you please go over the, huh?
What do you want sitting on this?
Huh? Oh, we have on this particular hearing. That's a good reminder, Mark. Thank you. So this is on the Stone Ridge Two. Here's my itinerary. I know Melissa gave it to me. It's probably passed everybody. Okay. I don't, nobody's got any conflicts from what I understand. Myself, David Pine, John Dagnes, Mark Casaloya, Chris Burns. One, two, three, four, five are on this hearing. Therefore, why don't, William, why don't you go ahead and go over your slight modifications based on what you can tell us?
Mind if Mr. Shipe doesn't?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, John Shipe.
Good seeing you again, John.
Right, right. Thank you very much for having us here.
By the way, I just want to let you know on behalf of the board, we appreciate the patience that you've had with the first release of the bond and clarification on some of the stuff that we had asked about. So we've gotten that completion, and of course, we appreciate your help doing that.
Right back at you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you, yeah.
So go ahead and give us some stuff of what you're trying to do as far as changes are concerned.
Okay, so you probably don't need a recap of the site or anything, the 260 units, the history.
No, it was approved.
Yeah, it was approved. Fairfield Residential built the prior, and now we're going to purchase this from Gutierrez. And it previously came to you, at one point it was three buildings, it was changed to two buildings, you issued an amended permit. It's still two buildings, still same number of units, same unit mix, same number of parking spaces, everything's pretty much the same.
With a special permit, everything is the same.
Yeah, all the same conditions, we're not asking for any changes on that. And again, if you want, Will can just point out that we did an overlay, the red and the black, to show where the footprints changed just a little bit. They're pretty incidental. We went to the Conservation Commission. They also believe that they were incidental, and Elizabeth Menini is just going to review the drainage counts that we resubmitted, and we haven't gotten that yet, but we don't anticipate any problems.
Something we do here would be predicated on that satisfactory view.
True that, yes. Yeah, and so real minor. And then what we also did was we presented it out of abundance of caution, we presented it to the fire department. Fire department also put, you might have got an email from them, so they're good with it. Go ahead, Will.
Thank you. Will Park, Civil Engineer with SMMA. So this overlay plan we put together is a combination of the previously approved is in black and white, and the currently proposed is in red. So as you can see, the perimeter of the project is unchanged. Really, all that did change is the building footprint as a result of Fairfield Residential's architect, their building footprint and the units just slightly kind of reshuffled the puzzle a little bit. So the building either stayed the same, exactly the same at the building end, shortened by roughly five feet, expanded by roughly five feet, and expanded, you know, a maximum of probably almost 20 feet right here. The Fairfield Residential's landscape architect also had different thoughts on the exterior amenities spaces, so those are slightly revised, all pretty much in the same area. It did not approach further to the wooden areas or the buffers. The limit of work stayed the same. And John mentioned the fire department. We were sure that the emergency parking areas, the circulation and the emergency access drive line are within the horizontal alignment and vertical elevation, so their emergency vehicle ladder reach through all the more difficult corners of the project are unchanged from.
And the new additions of the 20 feet on that section and another five on the other, that's still within their realm of reach, correct?
Yeah, that actually goes up to the access drive in both these locations. And this is a very simple reach for them right there.
Yeah.
You know, that's level, whereas, you know, right here, it's very sloped down, so.
Yeah, and we talked about this before, as far as if there was cars parked there, the fire apparatus can still pull up and still provide the reach of the ladder.
Correct.
Okay.
And those are.
From the plan there, and I drove up there today because I like to physically be around these sites when they're coming in front of the board. Show me on that plan now where the temporary heliport pad is.
The Phase One Emergency Designation Area is built.
Okay, that's exactly, yeah.
Is right there.
Okay.
The Phase Two Emergency Designation Area is right here, unbuilt. Fairfield Construction will build that in accordance with the comprehensive.
Right, because right now, all that is is an elevation over there that's currently existing. Nothing is asphalted to get on the site or anything because it's a temporary. The new decision on Phase Two, we do have in that decision, and I want to make sure it stays that way, that there is asphalt running from that roadway to the heliport so someone can get a gurney, you know, through the walkway. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir. We make sure, it's our understanding after many conversations with the fire department over the years, including recently, that the most critical area to them is this inner 100-foot diameter area.
Correct, yeah.
And we were sure, we were sure in both of them, that that abutted an unobstructed driveway, so that whatever.
Correct, but within the 100-foot, we put in the special decision, I just want to make sure we understand, that there was supposed to be an asphalt sidewalk into that area four feet wide. You may have to go back and check that because we discussed it.
Well, I can assure you, Mr. Chairman, if the condition is in there, we will make sure we comply with the condition explicitly as stated, yeah.
You know, if it's, again, having that there is great, but if you can't get to it easily, it's an issue, especially if there's an evacuation.
Dave, why do they have to have it?
Why they have to have it?
Yeah.
There's no second form of egress out of the complex. So if we had a major fire, all the roads coming in are going to be blocked with fire apparatus, and if we had to evacuate any residents, we couldn't get them out.
Do you fly in the helicopter?
I'm working on my license. I may want to store it over there.
Yeah.
Wasn't it the Amicore of Engineers said that one egress was enough?
Yeah, but this is strictly for a dire emergency.
No, I understand that.
So that's why, that's why we did it there, and they cooperated with it, right? We're grateful for that.
Possible accident necessary.
Whatever the condition is, we'll make sure we're complying with it.
Okay.
Is there a pool there? Is this a pool?
Yeah, there'll be a swimming pool.
Yeah, okay, great.
I can't remember, it's been so long since we permitted that. Was there a dog park or play area or any of that? I can't remember.
That was the other one. The other one, they withdrew the pool.
Yeah, right. They did withdraw the pool.
This will have a dog park. It's my understanding that is, it's split, large dogs, small dogs, right here.
That's right. That's right. It's a big deal.
And the playground is right here, sir.
Right, okay.
The only thing that I'd like to see is like, I'd like to see the bus park down the end of the street with this. If you have 500 units here, and there should be, you know, so the kids aren't standing in the snowbank, which is what happens like up in Shadowbrook.
Yeah.
They're standing on the roadway in Shadowbrook instead of standing, you know.
Yeah, we had the same situation with, I think it was Zane Ridge, where we actually had to add, they added some parking within the private community, so a lot of people today, they bring their kids down and they wait in the car until the bus shows up.
Yeah.
For safety reasons.
Yeah.
And we talked about this bus situation because they can't go, and they're supposed to go in the private complex.
Right, right.
So there's no room to put any of those there. That's the problem.
Down at the end of the street where the bike trail is, there's no.
The pump station's right there.
The pump station's further up, though.
Right, but it's all wet.
But out near the, where do the kids stand on the bus stop when they walk down the end of the street? The bus isn't turning into this location, is it?
Well, they're not supposed to because it's private property.
It's a private street, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the bus pulls up outside on, what's that, 16?
Yeah, so here's the Cedar Street entrance here, and you can see there really isn't any place to put anything. While he's looking at that, is there any other modifications on your letter?
There's a lot of things that didn't change.
I don't think there's any.
No, not really, no.
And partly, it was also just to let the board, I mean, you know, the original permit was granted years ago. We just wanted to let you all know this is moving forward, you know? You'll receive documents from us as the conditions are met, you know?
Yeah, so.
Dave, there's a sign easement here, so they could put it where the sign easement is. I mean, there's room for it down at the end.
Let me see. That says sewer easement.
Right out near the road to sign easement.
Dave, this is all, that's all wetlands in here.
Where they gonna put the sign? They putting the sign on the wetlands?
The sign's on the pole. It's on the street. That's just a mocking. It shows sign easement for the street. This is all wet.
On both sides it's wet?
Yeah. Again, I don't see any room. You're looking for like a little hut?
Yeah, like they did on the other one.
What other one?
On Burke Street. There's one on Burke Street.
Yeah, you can look at that, though, can't you? You can look at that? See if you can fit some kind of hut for the kids?
Yeah, I talked to Gutierrez about it because you brought it up when I was back here.
Yeah.
And they own the land, we don't. And he said, and Will, you've looked at it, it was tough enough just to get the sign in there.
Yeah.
There's really no place to add any asphalt and, and you're right, the wetlands are also an issue.
Right. I know, because we tried to even get a bike trail down through there.
Yeah, he mentioned, I think Israel mentioned that as well, trying to do that.
Yeah, I know, we've tried dissecting the crap out of this before. As a matter of fact, I even had the town planner, I was in front of her trying to dissect it as well to see if we could fit it anywhere. Well, the.
What's, what?
Let me see. That's wet.
The whole thing's wet?
It's wet, yeah.
What about the other side?
On the plan.
What about the other side of the property?
You're going opposite, though. Are you gonna have kids crossing that street?
So what'll happen is the buses will actually, a bus will have to stop on 16, correct?
Well, that, yeah, they don't go in here.
85, it's 85.
I know they don't go in, so I'm saying the bus would have to pick up on 16.
Route 85, yeah. Route 85?
85?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta agree with David that it should be something.
85 State Highway, they own 30 feet in. Yeah, they're right for 30 feet in.
The town does?
No, state.
The state owns 30 feet in?
State's got a 30-foot easement in there. Can I have that plan that I just gave you?
I give it back. Yeah, I give it back, yeah.
Yeah, the town's got 30 feet in, and then you got the radius, then you got the turning radius. And what's happening is the people coming from the complex, they're lining up along the street.
Correct.
Going down the hill, they're just lining up along the street, and then the kids walk the sidewalk to get to the bus stop. It's just kind of like stopping on Congress Street to pick kids up. I know we looked at it, and I just don't see any way. Tight.
Well, what's the, what's the, what's the thought process when, for the complex? Are you guys gonna be responsible plowing the sidewalk all the way down to 85? You are?
Yeah.
Does Restaurant Depot have any responsibility on there?
It's an association.
Okay.
Everybody up there, Fairfield that currently owns the property they just built.
Yeah, you'll have association fees to handle all that.
Yeah.
Okay. Similar to a condo project or what have you, as far as maintenance.
Exactly like that, yeah. Sidewalks and, and I don't know if I mentioned this, you might be aware, the bike signs that are being installed?
Yeah.
Yep, so all of that, all part of the association, actually.
Garages, you moved some garages?
Oh, yes, sir. Some of them are unchanged, but again, just Fairfield Residential's architect have slightly different preferences, so this one shifted two spaces, this one shifted kind of wholesale, that one shifted two feet.
But it hadn't changed the parking layout?
No, sir.
The amount of parking layout?
Same number of surface spaces, same number of accessible spaces, same number of garage spaces.
Okay. Okay. Any other members have comments?
What exactly are all these exterior amenities? What?
They're doing a landscape plan. That was part of their special permit.
Sitting areas, swimming pool.
Their fire pits. Stone Ridge One, you came in with a.
No, I mean on all the buildings, all these little red blocks that you say are exterior amenities.
You're talking about the little blocks?
Yeah.
Those are private patios. I don't know if every ground floor unit has a patio, but these ones on the outside of the building here, and there's a few on the inside are concrete patios here.
If you drive, if you drive, yeah, if you drive through Shadowbrook, you'll see a lot of people have those little patios on the first floor.
Yeah. Not sure they're used in today's weather with the humid 98 degrees, but they're a nice amenity.
Charge a little more for those units, for sure.
The maintenance of the heliport, that's all part of the association for you guys as well. Someone's gonna have to maintain that.
It'll be maintained, yeah, yeah.
I believe that's on the special permit. I see that you're giving the fire department access in perpetuity for the radio and infrastructure intercoms and bidary technical amplifiers for fire communications. That's great. I think there was a hole down in that area town that's gonna help a lot.
Yeah, that was a condition from your original permit, and now, as we've been talking with our designers and the fire department, they pointed out that, you know, they also need legally access, and we were like, absolutely, buy the access.
All right, well, yeah, you'll have knockbacks on all the buildings and all that. So as far as Phase One is concerned, why we have you here, you fully done?
Yeah.
Leasing, which will.
It's going well.
Where are you percentage?
We're at 94, 95% occupied.
Okay. Have you sent, have you guys sent anything over according to the special permit to the town? Because I believe there's certain criterias that were supposed to have been met.
Yeah.
It was under the 40B regulations, but also veterans, town employees, they were supposed to have an opportunities as well, so.
Yeah, I went through all.
I know your leasing office probably doesn't realize that, but.
No, we make sure. It's the handoff because it's the same company.
Right.
You know, I take all of the permitting conditions and go through them and check each one. If we needed to send you aspilts, we send you aspilts. And in fact, that's what flushed out, the fact that there was a bond, is that I needed to close out getting the bond. So all of the permitting, all of the conditions associated with leasing, which is also administered by the state.
Yeah.
All those conditions, we actually have a department that, you know, they do it all over the United States, and they drill right down into Massachusetts and.
Have you updated and sent anything? Have you seen anything that come through on the leasing aspect?
It may have been a year ago, yeah.
I think you sent it to Jerry.
Yeah, we sent everything to Jerry, yeah. And it's audited every year, so.
Okay, so we'll get an update.
Absolutely.
So you're at 95%.
Yeah, we're around that right now. Leasing is crazy. People need housing.
These are all one-year leases? You don't do three months, six months, four months?
Oh, yeah, actually, I'm not sure how property management does it, but usually it's typically a one-year lease. If somebody wants to lease for two years right away, they can, yeah.
But if we had a veteran that was needed three, four, or five, six months, is that something that's doable from a temporary standpoint?
I think, I think probably, I don't.
Would there be a contact person to go over that with?
It's.
Your leasing agent, they probably just wants a one-year lease, but if someone needs something temporarily, do you have that available?
I would, I can't say that it's available. It might be a one-off, you know, type of thing. But feel free to reach out to, through me, and we'll see what we can do, yeah.
Okay. We do have the direct contact information for the leasing manager, for the leasing company? Do we have that?
Jerry, I believe, has all of the information.
If I remember right, he does.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as there's availability there, I don't want to get to like we were with the car wash and then finding out that someone's in a different country and they can't respond, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and of course, there's an office there on site as well, too, so.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
Since you're 95% full, so to speak, a leasing, do you have any idea how many children are there?
I don't, I don't.
It's just a rough estimate. I'm thinking as David brought up the bus thing, just I'm wondering how many kids are gonna actually be out there in the morning.
Yeah.
Well, we have an overview report when they were permitting on what was anticipated so we could advise the school system.
I understand the anticipation.
I just don't know what that number is.
When I was chatting with somebody.
Down to around 95%, maybe, some sort of numbers.
Yeah, when I was chatting with somebody at the school department, I don't have his name in front of me, but they were very knowledgeable about exactly what students they pick up right down there on 85 for the different school levels and everything, so they were very knowledgeable of that.
Do you have those numbers?
I didn't ask for it, no, yeah.
I know we haven't increased police and fire yet, but I know that's coming because complexes like this are gonna need that. Any major issues or problems that we can help you with? I mean, are you having issues with maybe overcrowding or someone trying to get away with overcrowding?
No, we haven't.
I'm sure that's probably starting.
I mean, we get, you know, they vet the tenants pretty well, so we actually, you know, sometimes we get tenants that they don't qualify, you know? It might be something that doesn't work for them. So I'm not aware of any issues that we've had.
And then you have a separate 40B coordinator for leasing?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Is that through your company or is that a state affiliate?
It's Fairfield Residential. We have a compliance person that makes sure that they administer all of the requirements for the mass housing, and then submits the reports on, you know.
So if you had a guess, a 95% occupancy, you've filled the 40B requirement of the 25%, or pretty close?
Most likely, well, absolutely. I mean, there's always, 25% of them are leased at that stipulated rent level.
Okay.
Whether or not they're all occupied, I would say probably, because if my memory's right, you know, it was about two years ago now, they were the first to go, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, because we're gonna need that, of course, as part of your reporting.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, it's not a substantial change, therefore, we can approve this with a motion. I have a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mark, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. All those in favor, opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, so.
Thank you very much.
I don't know how long it would take them, but you can get the balance of that bond and sync for release. Okay? Thank you. What you do?
Slip down some chair, stairs, kicks them after my pose.
Oh, I thought you were dancing.
I would wear this at all my publications from now on.
Thanks, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping us updated as usual.
And again, there's permit conditions, you may be getting letters from us or money from us.
That'd be great. All right. All right, William, thank you. Thank you, John, appreciate it. Do you want the copies?
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. Might as well recycle it.
I signed one copy for the folder.
All right.
Okay. Who are you here for?
We are here for Congress Street, 50 Congress Street.
Oh. Well, come on up. Okay, this was just a request for continuance. We really didn't open up the hearing, but this is on the application of, can you pronounce your name?
Peter Genikopoulos.
Genikopoulos?
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
I love him. He has a voice. Nine, he's like the only guy.
It's not that hard to read it.
Peter's from 690 Southwest First Court, Miami, Florida, for special permit relief pursuant to section 3.1.4 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel of land located on the west side of Congress Street, known and numbered as 50 Congress Street, and it's on assesses sheet 41, lot 278. Special permit relief is sought in order to permit the change into a non-conforming use of an existing structure, which is a three-family with office on the main floor, to a four-family use pursuant to the subdivision that the plans filed with the applicant. So with that, the applicant indicates, if I can find it. Apparently, the property is mixed use, and for some members that aren't familiar, this was a law office on the first floor for many years. Three residential apartment units, one bedroom and one office space unit on that first floor. The use of the president or change that would take the office offline and add the apartment within that space. The applicant proposes to change the office space unit to a first floor, to first floor to a four, to one two-bedroom residential apartment unit where that office was. Number of families in the building to be arranged. Again, I'm just paraphrasing some of this, the zoning bylaw permits the alteration of a non-conforming use on a special permit basis. There's adequate off-street parking for the proposed use, and the applicant's proposal is consistent with the proposed use of the ten of the bylaw. Concerning the aspect of creating undue traffic or congestion or impaired pedestrian safety, the applicant states that the off-street parking on-site meets the parking requirements on the zoning bylaw. The volume of traffic onto and from the premises would decrease as a result of the proposed change use. The residential use should be less likely to interfere with pedestrian and vehicle traffic from nearby schools other than the office space itself. Concerning the question of the premises will not cause harm on the neighborhood, create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, the applicant states that the use of the property is changed is consistent with the use of other structures in the general vicinity and will have no adverse effect on the neighborhood nor create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. With that, this did go in front of the planning board, and I believe the planning board has indicated, and I'll paraphrase it, the planning board did review this petition at the seventh meeting, recommended a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. Larry Duncan, Larry Duncan's letter, the applicant requests a special permit to allow for a change from a non-conforming use to another on the subject property. The existing house is non-conforming three-family dwelling with a professional office on the first floor. Specifically, the proposal is to convert the first-floor office to two-bedroom apartment. The existing first-floor apartment is a one-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and a bath. The existing second-floor arrangement contains one, one-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and bath, and the other one, the other one two-bedroom unit with a living room, kitchen, and bath. The three existing apartments will remain unchanged. The off-street parking area off West Street can accommodate eight parking spaces, thus complying with the ratio of two spaces per apartment. The faded parking lot striping needs to be refreshed, therefore, I recommend a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. And with that, Attorney Burtonazi, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's David Burtonazi. I'm here on behalf of Peter...
Genikopoulos.
Mr. Genikopoulos is with me here, obviously, this evening, and he is the owner of the property at 50 Congress Street, and this petition relates to that property, property associated in the RA zoning district. Presently, the, the use of the property is mixed. There are three one-bedroom dwelling units and one office space unit that most recently was used by a prior owner. That's the, that's the foot, the site plan, you have the, they might be more...
Floor plan, do you have another floor plan?
I do have another floor plan. You want me to give you this so you can have it?
Yeah, yeah, because I want one for both sides of the table. Please.
One-bedroom units existing and a office that was most recently used as a law office by a prior owner. The proposal is to convert it to four residential dwelling units, the existing three one-bedroom units, and a converted two-bedroom unit. And by saying converted, I don't mean to imply that there is going to be major structural work on the property. There is already a kitchen present. We would anticipate that any, any work on the property would be more of a cosmetic nature to make that conversion. In order to effect this change, Mr. Genikopoulos requires zoning relief in the form of a special permit for the change of a non-conforming use pursuant to section 3.1.3 of the zoning bylaw. So as stated in the petition, there is more than adequate off-street parking to serve the proposed use. The proposed use is an entirely residential use, is more consistent with the other properties in the direct vicinity, the great bulk of which are residential. This is a residential zoning district. We would expect that the, the changed residential versus commercial use would result in a decrease in the flow of traffic onto and off of the property and owing to times of days when uses peak and just the nature of the use, we would expect that the proposed use would result in less likelihood of conflict or interference with the pedestrian and traffic use that are generated by the two nearby schools. Again, there is no significant change of the dwelling unit that is proposed. If the board is inclined to grant the requested relief, when you walk by the property today, it's really going to look no different than it will in the future. With that said, we're happy to try to answer any questions or address any concerns that the board might have.
I'm just going to bring up a couple of comments and then the board members can kick in. So I remember this piece of property as being a very well, beautiful-looking property, and I think three or four years ago, is that when you bought it?
I bought it right before COVID, I think, '19, right at the 20.
And the place looks amazing. Now it looks like it's hit all again.
You don't have a camera, right?
Peeling paint, I mean, the landscaping is not kept up. This needs to get back to where it was and maybe when you bought it. Because when I drove by there, it was an eyesore.
Recently or previous?
I drove by there tonight. There's peeling paint, the staircases, there's railings, there's peeling, the landscaping is...
So, may I add? Landscaping, I have a contract, so twice a month. I have a young kid from Milford, who has a landscaping company that goes in, and I pay for it every month, twice a month.
Looks like no one's done any landscaping there for a while.
You know, it's hard to manage them sometimes. I ask them for proof, but sometimes it's difficult. In regards to exterior, I'll be honest, when I purchased it, the building was very neglected.
Yeah, I know. It looked great when you did it.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So the gentleman I bought it was an awesome man. I know he's passed away. I got to know a little bit of the family, but I did some exterior work to it, but didn't put too much money into it, because again, there was other things in the building that had to get done that was just a mess.
Right.
So, but yeah.
So the only thing that I noticed here, there's, there's no measurements in these bedrooms. For instance, unit two, the floor plan, looking at a bedroom, it doesn't see this, it shows no closet there, but it shows like a knee wall. So what I, what I don't want to happen, which sometimes happens, and I'm not saying it, I'm just saying it in general, any decision tonight in a positive favor will not allow any further separation or dividing of any rooms. Because I want to make sure that...
Right.
A two-bedroom doesn't end up a four.
Absolutely.
That'll be one of the conditions, of course. Otherwise, you know, I get it. I don't see an issue concerning this non-conformity over to an existing non-conformity. I think it will definitely help. And then a couple of the conditions I would recommend would be, one, no further dividing of any of the rooms within the dwelling on any floor. And then the other one would be that the parking lot striping has to occur and be maintained. Right now, I'll push it off to fire escape ladder, is that go to the third floor?
Is that the circular staircase?
No.
The exterior.
Actually, when I, oddly, when I bought the property, the bank, there was a circular stair there that wasn't attached to the property. The bank made me take it down, because I think it was a hazard at that time. But there is an escape ladder that's, I'll be honest, probably not even up to code, that comes from the second floor to a landing, and then you can...
Someone's got to jump.
No, you climb down to the grass lawn area. So that's what is going on on that side of the building, next to the, where the grass is, the lawn.
Okay, yeah. All right, I'll turn that over to board members. Dave?
I'll give them questions.
I asked if there was any conflicts. You didn't tell me you had a conflict.
I don't. Is Dave Claro on this particular meeting?
No. Why? Oh, no, it's, it goes to the first alternate when we're full-time members. Any alternates can discuss anything within the meeting at all.
It's on the voting.
Okay, so you have questions?
No.
How about Dave, you have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Just unit one here that we're changing over. You have office number three, two, one, kitchen, restroom is, what is going to become the bedrooms, office two?
So the next floor, two bedrooms in that one.
I think this is our four and a half.
Yeah. There's, the way the layout is positioned now, we have two front rooms and essentially two bathrooms. So there's basically four rooms and a bathroom.
Right.
You could interchange which ones you really want to make.
Oh, I see it now, okay.
But it could be a living room first and a living, you know, you could change it, but, but you could make two bedrooms there that additionally had doors and closets, not closets, but doors there to...
The kitchen, the kitchen that's in that room, that in that, in this first floor now, you have to add, I assume, stuff to it? It's not used as a kitchen now, or is it?
It hasn't been used as a kitchen, but when I did buy it, he had like a kitchen, a kitchen plumbing and sink and everything there. So I kind of heard it that way. So I've done renovations in extent to cosmetic things, like painting, thinking maybe I could rent it out to an office. Lot of luck for a couple of years now, since COVID didn't help out. So I've kind of just did some cosmetic stuff, nothing as far as I feel.
So on this plan, we're showing office one, office two, office three, and then a bedroom in the back. Which rooms are actually going to be bedrooms? Because right now, you could make this a three-bedroom.
There would be no living room then.
There'd be no living space, you'd just have a kitchen.
You'd have a kitchen, three bedrooms, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
So where it says living room on the plan, would that now be a dining room?
I don't know that there's a plan for a specific...
May I take a look?
Yeah.
So this one here.
Office, office, office. Okay, so that is what it is right now. This is the space. This is the other apartment.
Oh, so it's just this?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
This is, this is what it currently looks like.
Right. So you're going to do kitchen in one of these...
I probably, this would definitely be a bedroom, and most likely this will be a bedroom, and I'll, and I'll be a family room, because it's right off, would be what the kitchen would be.
All right, so if I mark these and sign the plan, you can work with that, right?
Absolutely.
Living room?
It's not shown on the second...
It's on, yeah. It's probably the proposed.
Yeah, that should be over here now, under the post.
This one...
This is proposed first floor.
Yeah, this one.
So actually, you have those reversed, that's that being the living room and those being your bedroom?
They're exactly equal.
Well, this is a closet, so that makes sense to be a bedroom.
Only reason why left is the bedroom is because there's a faux fireplace there, a marble, I don't think.
All right, so this will be the plan that we will, we will go with now.
Correct. Absolutely.
That makes sense, all right. Gaga?
No questions.
Mark?
Okay, one of these, the apartment stairs, 480 square feet.
There is. It's small, tiny, yeah.
The other one's going to be 900 square feet?
The one that's there now, yeah, it's probably double the size.
But you're going to have 480 square foot apartment on the first floor plus a 900 square foot.
Yeah.
Correct. Right?
As the first floor, yeah, perhaps, yeah.
This was the old office.
Are you renovating? Are you renovating that 480 at all?
There's a tenant side right now.
Okay.
Yeah. He's been there for 14 years.
So that's not going to be renovated?
No.
Well, I got a problem putting four families on Congress Street. I'd rather see that come up street than want to have a problem.
He's got the right to go from one non-conforming use to another.
The only thing I may add is that keeping them small bedrooms limits, you know, heavy traffic on that street with more kids and more school buses and picking up. So all my apartments, the other ones are, I would say, age-wise, 50-plus, single men, retired, and there's no kids in the property at all. No one's even married, it's single men.
I would suggest, I would suggest it probably makes it more difficult to overcrowd them if you've got these small units. So it says he is, he is domiciled in Miami on the petition, but he's a Massachusetts kid.
Born and raised.
He is from, now framing him by way of Everett and doesn't presently...
Not going to live here.
Well, he does, maybe. He, he doesn't presently have living residence in Massachusetts. He's here basically in Massachusetts, you know, every month, but travels back and forth. When he's here now, he lives with family.
In Framingham and my mom north out of Brooklyn.
So it's possible that it will make more sense for him and his wife to, but he not really committed to that.
My wife took me to Miami two years ago, so I have worked there as well in, so we don't have a home here. I live with my parents. So it could possibly be, I don't want to say yes, I don't want to say that I'm definite, but it could. I don't see why not.
Any other comments? Anybody else here? Dave, questions?
I mean, maybe just some plant things of some sort to make it look a little nicer in the city area for it. Otherwise, I don't really have a problem with it.
Any other comments?
I'm good.
Yep? Nope? Okay. So in general, this is what I'm, I'm kind of hearing. Clearly, the town, the town, the planning board would like to see these, the parking spaces to be lined up, and I think that, that needs to, the parking spaces need to be stripped, and that needs to be done. And then, of course, that also needs to be maintained and not let, let go. So if it needs to be repainted in a year, we need to do that. I'd like to see, Dave, that was a good point. Maybe we should have it dressed up a little bit with some plannings.
Yeah.
Do you have any preference?
Do you have any preference?
I would love to clean the place up, but, you know, there comes to an extent of how much I can do, when to do it, and how much to invest into a property, right? So I would love to clean up, but I don't, I know my neighbor's awesome. She's been there forever. We communicate all the time.
There's some boxwoods.
If we plant, is there a location on the property where we buy?
Fairly cheap, they look nice around the walkway. It dresses it up.
Yeah, maybe six, six or eight boxwoods.
Yeah, on each side of the walkway would look really nice. The idea is to try to make it look like it's not a four-family.
Yeah, I understand.
So we'll do six or eight, we'll do, we'll do between six and eight boxwoods plants. You talking about in the front?
Yeah.
Along the sidewalk in the front?
Along the sidewalk, it looks nice.
Kind of creates a little hedge.
So now, is that fire escape going to stay the way it is now, or will there be any adjustments to that, with the fire?
Well, it's not, right now, it's in place for the upstairs residence. It wouldn't need to have anything for the downstairs because it's first floor.
And that, that apartment would have...
You said it goes to a, top of a garage, right?
No, no.
To the ground?
The staircase, the stair goes to the ground.
But in like two...
The ladder stair, yeah. But that apartment...
Steps and then it's ladder down, yeah.
But that apartment does have two egresses, front door and rear.
Okay, so there's two there.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
That's fine. And we'll get that, we'll get the porch area and that staircase kind of freshened up a bit with some paint, make it look nice up.
I'd like to be a good property owner, yeah. I'd like to be something.
Well, you want to be proud of what you own.
I, I think I...
We're now helping you get there.
Yeah.
So the cooperation would be, let's make it look nice, too.
Of course, I totally agree.
All right, so...
Everything has two egresses, correct?
Sorry?
Everything has two egresses.
With the exception of that one unit that's got the, the escape ladder.
Well, he didn't answer the question.
Yes, he did.
He still answered.
The, that unit in the back, the four hundred square one?
Yeah.
Unless the one, I, I've only been in this apartment a couple of times, but unless one of the windows surprises a second egress, I'm not, I don't know if there's a...
But that's first floor, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes right to the hallway, and then it goes out.
Exactly.
And then there's windows, that's fine. Okay. All right, so right now, I'm looking for a motion that we, we can, we, parking lot stripe the spaces for the eight stalls. Those need to be installed and maintained annually. We're looking to get, provide the special permit to convert the offices to a two-bedroom on that floor only. There'll be no additional, no additional petitioning of any rooms to add any additional bedrooms or rooms. And then between six and eight boxwoods along the, the side of the sidewalks on both sides, I would say that would be the recommended motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor? Opposed? And one, one of steps. You're good.
Thank you so much.
You know the twenty-day period, all that stuff?
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do a good job with it. Make it look nice. All right, thank you. With that, we do not have any additional hearings for tonight. When's our next hearing, meeting?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth, okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mark, second by Dave, okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Good night, everyone. We'll see you next month. Enjoy your summer.